We will call the meeting to order. All members are present and accounted for on this November thirteenth, 2017, meeting. Would you all rise, face the flag, as we say the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Beth, do you have anything, any additions?
Not tonight, no.
If no one has any additions or amendments, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as shown.
How much motion?
Motion by Kurt.
I'll second.
Seconded by Jerry. Other discussion? All in favor of approving the motion, or the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry. Schedule presenters. Danielle Fields will give us MCA results and breakdown. If you...
Give me a second, second just if you don't mind. Perfect. So we're going to take a look at the 2016, 2017 MCA scores. And I have two comparisons. One is we're going to look at the overall MCA scores for math, reading, and science, compared to the state and other districts in a three-year span from 2015 to 2017. And then later on, we'll look at the breakdown by grade level over the information in which we have. So I started with our MCA scores for math. And if you notice, there's three years that are represented up here on this graph. But the number that I want you to pull, to you to look at, is look at the 2017 across the board. And for the sake of not reading every single slide for you, I'll just highlight a few items and I'll let you look at the details for yourself. If you notice, our achievement this year for MCA's math scores, we're at fifty-seven point seven percent of students who are proficient or advanced on our MCAs. And if we compare that to the rest of our school districts around us, you will notice that outside of one, we are surpassing with achievement. And if you compare it to the state, it's nearly the exact same. If we move on to reading, the same thing for reading. In this case, Cannon Falls, overall, our achievement for MCA reading, not only does it surpass the other school districts around us, but it also surpasses the state, in which we have sixty-four point five percent of our students across the elementary, middle school, and high school achieving proficient and advanced on our MCA reading scores. Our last overall comparison is in science. And if you look, once again, that trend continues, far outperforming the state, at sixty-five point percent, sixty-five percent of students achieving proficient and advanced on our MCAs, and once again, outperforming a majority of our surrounding school districts. Next, we move on to, and I see it rearranged, my slides on me, so sorry. I did have them in the correct order, but so we'll just flip it around. If you look at, when it comes to the MCA science, there are three grades that take it: fifth grade, eighth grade, and tenth grade. And if you look at our very last column or 2017, our 10th graders had significant improvement. If we're looking from last year's group to this year's group of 10th graders, a nice chunk of improvement from seventy point five percent to seventy-eight percent of scoring proficient in advance. Reading, since reading is taken every year, third grade, well, almost every year, third grade through 10th grade, freshmen do not take them, 11th graders do not take the exam. You can see a side-by-side comparison, in which overall, we achieved, we increased in our achievement of proficient in maths from 2016 to 2017. Once again, significant difference between last year's 10th graders and this year's 10th graders. Or I should say, two years previously, excuse me. And then our last should be math. If we look at comparison, there is a slight decrease from 2016 to 2017. Tim or Jennifer, did you, I know we had talked about that when looking at, at the difference from math from 2016 to 2017. And Tim, you had some insight on that?
The 11th grade in particular?
Yes.
Yeah, our 11th graders, we got several, around 12 students who took that test in under fifteen minutes. So kids know that the MCAs don't have any impact on their graduation or on their grades. So we're starting to see students who are just, they're just not taking it seriously.
So utilizing, definitely utilizing MCA scores as a reference, both the elementary and the middle school and high school created some building goals, looking at the 2017, 2018 school year. For the elementary, we're looking at increasing student achievement from sixty point nine to sixty-five point nine percent in math, sixteen point one to sixty-five point one percent in English Language Arts, and then fifty-five point four to sixty point four in, percent in science.
And just so you know, this is a big part of the World's Best Workforce. And so each of the principals are responsible for getting this to us. We have to follow up with the state on these goals. So these goals are definitely things that we know we can achieve and do well on. So this is a really, it isn't a goal that we just set and throw out there. This is a goal that we really work towards and work very hard to get to. So this, this exact slide and this information will be downloaded into that World's Best Workforce that you'll see on that next board meeting.
Thank you. Looking at our middle school and high school, our, our building goals are to utilize best practices to increase student achievement in each of the content areas, and offer hours of staff development during the school year.
Can you explain what that SIOP means?
Yeah, that was the original one that I had taken off. It was something that we were looking at, but it isn't, isn't going to be carried through. I did make a change to that today, but for some reason, it didn't save when I pulled this up.
What is that, SIOP?
SIOP is, uh, it, SIOP is a particular teaching method for English learners, students, so EL, formerly ELL students. But it is also a best practice. So as part of that first goal of utilizing best practice, we were looking at possibly implementing SIOP and training our staff to use that method. But it didn't come, it didn't come about just due to some other changes that happened. So it's still, it's still an option at some point if, if we choose to go down that road.
Go forward in the future, possibly.
Correct.
And then if we're wondering how we get there, Mr. Hodges and I had a, had a discussion about this. And what this does is it ties in everything around student learning, and it looks at, as what are the pieces in place that we're already doing within the buildings to help reach those building-wide goals that we set? And if we look, there's educator effectiveness, so we're utilizing best practice in PD. I know over the last year and a half, Cannon Falls area schools have done a lot of work at looking at curriculum and standards alignment, particularly in vertical alignment across K-12. Having a focus on building-wide literacy. This year, as you can tell, Fastbridge is a new assessment that is being utilized, really for use of progress monitoring, help to meet kids where they're at and move their achievement forward. Looking in some of our grading and reporting practices, utilizing Schoolaging Infinite Campus. And then lastly, our PLCs and our MTSS processes. So really digging in deep and looking at where students are and how can we assist them, see what they need and help them grow. Does anyone have any questions?
I have a question on math. Can you go back to that slide?
For sure. Which one? Overall or specific for Star School District?
The grid.
Okay.
Do we know why it seems to always be that there's such a drop-off between the fourth and fifth grade? Is fourth grade kind of the, the problem solve math, or the fifth grade is kind of the problem solve math one?
Yes, it definitely transitions, the MCA test transitions into that. But I would just like to highlight that the test structure is, is much different in fifth grade than it is from fourth and third grade. So there's going to be a natural drop, and that's kind of something what I'm learning about as we go along.
Well, even the state average drops as well. I mean, it's, it's universal. It isn't a Cannon Falls thing, like, you know, why is it always questioned between that fifth and sixth and fourth and fifth? It is, we are still very much above that state average, but it's, it's hard to explain why there's always that year.
And I, I thought maybe, I mean, this is only one of my ninth year on the board. It seems like every year, they always see that dip. So I'm wondering if it's, they're going from standard math to the problem solve word math, which becomes a little bit more difficult?
It's, it's built into the structure of the test itself. So as far as MCA proficiency goes, the easiest year to beat proficiency is in third grade. And it builds to the most difficult year to beat proficiency is somewhere in middle school, you'd be seventh and eighth grade typically are the two most difficult years. So the drop from year to year is, like, like Superintendent Key said, that is across the state, we see that, but it's structurally built into that test because the proficiency level changes every year.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Yeah, something with the 11th grade dropping, because students really just don't care. And I know, I think we've talked a little bit at this level, about other potential ways of grading or, or understanding what their capabilities are, because as you said, this is one-day snapshot, good day, bad days, no days, sunny day. What else, is there something we could do to get a better snapshot, not a snapshot, a better overall evaluation of the students?
I think the best thing to look at for high school students in particular is ACT results. And I have that, I have that all back since way before me. We've got a lot of historic data on, on ACT. And typically, our ACT results are right at the state average. And this is even, this is before everybody in this, every 11th grader took the ACT, and even continuing after all of our students are taking ACT now. We used to, we used to average between sixteen and about eighty percent of our students in 11th and 12th are taking ACT, and now everybody does. But we are basically, if you look at the statistics, right at the state level in math, which is a good thing, because ACT is a nationally normed test. Minnesota does much, is one of, always one of the top three states in the United States as far as ACT scores go. So it's a good thing that we're at the state average for that one, because our, our kids in Minnesota typically do well compared with everybody else in the nation. So our students in Cannon are, are doing equally as well.
Is that a report we can get with next?
Yeah.
MCA, you have to throw that in. Because I know what you're saying, and I would disagree, that, yeah, some people may not care about MCAs. I don't know if they all care about ACTs either, but it would be interesting to see kind of what they look like.
Yep.
Thank you.
You know, personally, I always question, I hate to say the legitimacy of these tests, but the time we spend and the outcomes that we get, I'm kind of bothered by them in a way, because, you know, it is, it's a snapshot on that particular day, like, like Rob indicated. But we do spend a lot of time on that. Do you see any structure of the MCAs changing?
Well, that's kind of a difficult thing, because they have been changing.
And that's the problem.
Yeah, they, since the state applied for the No Child Left Behind waiver, there's really not been a whole lot of stability in the assessment system in the state of Minnesota. It has changed from year to year, and I don't know, I don't know when it's going to stabilize again.
I think in 2019, when they really do the final review of ESSA and figure out where they're at on things, I mean, they, they have to get something concrete. There's some glitches they have to fix. You know, parents opting their children out, which they have every right to do, counts as a zero towards the school district. That's, that's ridiculous. And so I know that the organization that's working with ESSA on some of those things, if you truly want to assess them, then that's fine. But if they're not going to be assessed, it shouldn't be damaging to the, you know, to the school district. That, that isn't right either. So there's certainly some glitches with the actual test, and there's certainly some glitches with the overall systematic approach of how we're doing these things. Different districts are doing it differently. We're all trying to learn from those types of things. But I think you'll still see some changes by 2019, and the poor administrators and teachers that are working with us are up for another change coming up.
How, how much time do you spend preparing and actually testing in a, in a year?
Preparing for?
Well, all, all of our standards in math and reading are, are built around, that's what, that's what's tested in the MCA tests. So all year long, kids are preparing for these exams. As far as the actual examinations, what is it, two and a half typically?
I think it's two and a half hours.
About two and a half class periods typically for, for each student, that's kind of average. So the way we're, we're doing the testing now is students use their Chromebooks or, I guess they use a lab here.
Well, yeah, we'll have iPads in the fifth grade, and then Chromebooks in the third and fourth grade.
So in, in the middle school, high school, they do that in their class, in their class with that device over the course of a couple of days. So, so again, it kind of depends on how long the student decides, how hard they decide to work on these tests. But typically, about two and a half days' worth of class time on, on each of these tests. So one week we do reading, one week we do math, one week we do science, so.
We've heard before that some schools play to the test, whatever that terminology might be. And, and how does that, when schools get consistently in the upper seventies on the results, doesn't that de-legitimize the test a bit?
No, because, you know, there, there, there is this idea that they're teaching to the test. Well, it's just as easy to say that they're teaching to the standards, because the test is based off the standards. So, you know, that's part of the reason why we spent as much time as we did doing our, our curriculum alignment in the last year and a half, because we need to know where there are holes in our curriculum as far as which standards we're not, we're not teaching. There, there are lots of pieces that need to go into this, too. We need to start analyzing that test better to look and see what standards actually are being tested, because not all of them are tested, and not all of them are tested equally. So, you know, that's, that's just a, a time-consuming piece that somebody needs to do, is start doing that data analysis, and then reporting that back to staff, so that they can make changes in their instruction. So, you know, a lot of it is, is, again, you can say that they're teaching to the test, but they can say they're teaching to the standards, and you're both right, so.
Could we see a role in devices as far as evaluating throughout the year to help us to find out where, if we're weak on a standard at MCA time, would that be what you would use to go back to find out possibly where we need to strengthen ourselves?
Yeah, I mean, that's, we're already doing some of that in math in particular, with what we're doing with accelerated math in the sixth and seventh and ninth grade. We, that gives us some really good data analysis as far as where kids are struggling, what concepts are struggling on, and those are things that teachers can make immediate improvement and immediate changes in their classrooms based on that data.
Any other questions?
So what's going on in Zambretta, Muzepa?
Well, I tell you what, I would dearly love to be able to have a, a middle school reading class in seventh and eighth grade. That's one thing we'd be using that's different.
But what's so funny about that exact comment is, a few years ago, they were coming to us and saying, "What did you guys do?" You know, it, it really is a snapshot. It really is something that we, we all kind of jilt about. There's certainly schools that you could put up there that are way below us. We don't want to do that either. We wanted to give you a, a good, similar schools. We thought that was important.
I mean, a good success mark is if you look at science and how our science has improved, they've really done a good job of that, you know, really analyzing that test and going back and looking at, you know, how the standards are assessed by the state, and making changes to their curriculum based on them. And it's, it's evident in the scores, you know. You know, just kind of as a rule of thumb, when you look at our MCA scores and the percentages that are up there, you know, if, if we're in, within about five percentage points from one year to the next, then we're kind of riding at about the same level. We're seeing increases that are more than that. Those are genuine increases in student achievement.
And I think something you said earlier is, you know, ACT test scores, I mean, we're, we're doing so well in those areas, those things that really matter. Kids that go on and do the ASVAP test, I'm not sure if Grant, if you've had it?
Yeah, Brendan did his ASVAP, and he excelled.
Our kids, they're, they're just really, really doing well, comparable to other districts. We're not here to put this up here to brag about Cannon Falls and some of those aspects. We're giving you the MCA results because that's what we should do. But there are so many other areas that we could be just literally bragging about, and I'm really proud of our, our soon-to-be graduates and the kids that are graduating from here, because they're doing really, really well. We are preparing them for the future, and that makes me really excited, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Danielle.
Am I logging on there? Do you want me, would it be easier if I just log in? Let's just wait. We'll see if they need it or not. They may not need it. Okay. Yeah.
Okay, reports in communication. Grant, what do you have for us? Student rep?
Sweet, well, finally, your student reps are back, so. First quarter's over. Yep, so now we're back into it. Sorry about that. But now we're here, and we got a lot of stuff for us, so I'll try and go through fast. So first one, the musical is over with Anything Goes, and so with the seven seniors involved, they had a blast with it. And I'd just like to give an update that Madeline Walsh actually is going to write the skit for the one-act play. So that will be cool, how that goes along, how they do later on in the year. Debate also is going along smoothly with seven participating, which is around the normal numbers. We've already done two competitions, now we're gearing up for mock state, which is for the younger kids that are novices, and then also sections in state, which happens in December, which actually, my brother and I are partners, so we'll see how that goes. Robotics is starting a little bit earlier this year to get ready and geared up towards activities. They're having meetings once a week, which is every Tuesday, just to kind of get a feel for things and get ready once our topic finally comes out later on in the year. And then winter sports are now starting to get rolling. I think girls start this week and boys next week for basketball, and wrestling has already been going on with conjunction with Randolph. And then for Veterans Day, we had a ceremony today with the firing band, and it was really cool as we were talking about the ASVAP. Brendan Klitsky, who's in my grade and a good buddy of mine, led in the VFW, because he recently did basic out at Fort Jackson in South Carolina. So he excelled on his ASVAP, and he is going to become a mechanic for the M1 Abrams. And so that's going to play into his future role in his life dreams, that start up his own car mechanic shop with, like his grandfather did. So I just thought that would be a cool story to talk about with Brendan and Veterans Day. And then we recently received an email for pharmacy, for students that are interested in going into that field, there will be information. And so what I've seen, which is kind of cool in Cannon Falls, is Mrs. Hoffman and Mrs. Clegg are really good at getting information out to the students for different types of either career or scholarship activities. So we recently, as the senior class and other students get emails, such as a Mayo Clinic Day. So they went down to Mayo Clinic and did surgery on gummy worms with real surgery equipment. And so, you know, they were using giant 100 times microscopes, so on and so forth. So it's really neat to get these opportunities that Mrs. Clegg and Hoffman go. So I thought that that shouldn't go without being noticed. Then also, we've had the Voice of Democracy VFW contest is done and under wraps, so I think five students did that this year, and so they'll be announcing winners in a couple of months or so, or a month. And then recently, we had WE Day, which is in conjunction with NHS, Student Council, and Interact, in which because of our good service to the community and the world last year, we were able to go to the party, they call it, up at the Exel Center. And so with it, they had the Kenyan Boys, I believe they're called, which actually played at President Obama's inauguration. And so they're a vocal group from Kenya, and so they were there. And then also, I believe Justin Trudeau's mother, or his wife was, that's from Canada, came and spoke at WE Day. So there are a bunch of big names, and there was an inspirational calling. On top of that, NHS did ditch cleanup, and then Interact cleaned up the courtyard. And from a, from the student council perspective, we're trying to organize survival bags for those that have been afflicted by the hurricanes down in Texas and Puerto Rico, or sending these survival bags to California. So right now, as the student council, we're working on trying to figure out how we're going to get this set up in the school for collecting items and what organization we're giving it to. So that's what's happening around Cannon Falls. Glad to be back.
All right, next is the school board committee reports. Has anyone met?
Curriculum, can we, met just today? And just to kind of touch on some things, the science curriculum for sixth through 12th grade, that's arrived and they're, that's in full effect right now, from what I understand. And then they're also now looking at for 2017 and 18, they are going to be doing a review cycle for the math program. And is that for elementary and high school, correct? In middle school and high school? So that's in effect. And they're looking at, there's some issues, some with textbooks, like for human geography, there's an issue where the class is bigger than what we have in supply for textbooks. So now the question is, going out, they're looking into what the cost might be. Do you buy a whole new set, or do you just buy enough to offset the difference of how many kids are there? But, you know, many of them, they stopped making the first, or the second edition. So they're kind of looking to that right now, as to what the cost is going to be there. So just looking into buying of other texts, that sort of thing. But it is a good discussion. I'm just looking at anything else for, for now, but that, that pretty much sums up, unless you guys have anything? Okay.
Any other reports?
Technology, Matt, when did we meet, two weeks ago? Yeah, two weeks ago. Really just looking at where they're standing for the year. They've implemented everything as far as one-to-ones, new devices are in, and I think right now we're kind of looking, relooking at the goals.
Yeah, and that's been carried through now to admin. Really great discussion that kind of spiraled off of that meeting, and we're really excited to get going on what we want those goals to look like, so that the next time you and Kurt come to that meeting, we can have something more kind of laid out, and then better communication can come from that, so we're hoping.
Facilities, Matt. We're working on a policy for issuing keys and fobs for the entire staff and coaching and everyone else that's involved that needs a key or a fob. Because currently, there's no, really policy, and if you lose a key, what happens? So they're looking for signage for the crosswalks, and the crosswalks they're talking about is by the fieldhouse doors when there's events. Dave has a few ideas how we're going to, kind of, we're going to try to close that off on event night, so cars are pulling in and people are walking out, and once they're ever going to get run over, so that's... Then we re-discussed the, use of the building over the holidays, and review the procedures for Thanksgiving and Christmas, New Year's for the fieldhouse. And we talked about adding, they're looking at adding a door fob down by the high school office. It's one of the only offices in the building that does not have a fob for it. And then they, you had an auditorium update, so those of us that walked through the auditorium and saw what it looked like prior, to bring people in, actually hired, what's his name?
Well, we've got a couple different, Emery, and then Mr. Duggan has also been a big instrumental part in kind of getting that laid out better when people rent the facility. They have a contact person now?
Cleaned up and inventoried and fixed and replaced. That does look really nice. So that's, that's really all we reviewed in this meeting, that's new.
Quick question, Jerry. And I don't know if you know the answer. What do we agree to for the hours over Thanksgiving, since it's just around the corner?
Hey, I might have it right.
We did, we looked up the board meeting and actually played it through. It's closed on Thanksgiving Day.
Just Thanksgiving Day? Okay, so every other day, sorry, Bob, I know you always want it open on Thanksgiving Day, so every other day it is open?
And you did again this year.
Yeah. We did, we did look at it to make sure that we had remembered what was said at that meeting.
Okay, and then Christmas, Christmas dates closed?
Christmas Eve and Christmas.
Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, Christmas Eve as well, I think, correct?
Yep. New Year's Day, Good Friday, Memorial Day, Fourth of July, Labor Day.
Okay, any other committees?
Elementary, nothing. The Dead Foundation, Gift to the Max, Thursday.
Wear green and hop online. If you haven't got the link, certainly go to the school webpage. It's there, ready for you.
All right, no one else? We'll move on to administrative reports. Jen, I see yours is attached. Any comments? Just read it.
I cannot remember what I put on there.
All right. Mr. Hodges, anything from you?
Sure. We just ended first quarter, believe it or not, last week. I'd like to give a big thank you to Lisa Endress and Amanda Thompson for their work on staff development in our middle school, high school PLCs. They have really kind of taken the bull by the horns with that. We just had a kind of a culminating presentation with our vertical alignment that we worked on for a long time on Friday, and I think both Jennifer and I were really happy and pleased with the outcome of that. And it was great, because all staff got to see how kids progress from grades K through 12 in each curricular area. And that's not something that we always do a very good job of sharing, even internally. But we thought it was important for staff to be able to see what everybody else is doing, just so they can start making connections. Because when kids, kids really learn and they start connecting their material in between different curricular areas, you know, we don't live in silos. But in school, we put kids in silos all day long. You've got math, you've got science, you've got social studies, language arts, and all the other things you do. And this was a good, this was a good opportunity for staff to see what everybody else is doing and see what they're expecting from students. So, and Amanda and Lisa were instrumental in that. So, I'd like to thank them for that. Like Grant said, we had a wonderful Veterans Day program today. It's always great to see so many community members come in and be a part of that. I think it's really important for our students to see our local veterans and to really give an opportunity for them to thank those people for everything that they've given for us. The Fall Musical again was wrapped up. It was a great show. Tiny Lake Bowl did a good job, and, you know, anytime our kids are out there tap dancing, I think that's a wonderful thing. So, Wednesday, this Wednesday, we have our Minnesota Honor Society induction ceremony at 7:00 PM in the auditorium. So, you're all really welcome to attend that if you'd like and to see that happen. And just kind of upcoming things for middle school, high school, we've got our next round of conferences on Monday, December 11th, from four to eight, in teachers' classrooms, like we did at this fall.
Okay, thank you. Danielle, you're kind of a new person on the block here. Anything to add at all?
Well, thank you. I am good. I'm good with everything that I'm saying.
Community adding activities. Jake?
Not much for me. Winter participation numbers are good so far. Girls' basketball got started today. Their numbers are up. Kind of, girls' basketball and wrestling are always the two that are lowest in the winter, and both of them are going to be up this year. So, wrestling's significantly up. I think right now, with the lead to go, they have at least 10 more than they had last year. Girls' basketball looks good. We'll field four levels, seven, eight, C on most nights. Sometimes we'll play JV and then varsity. And then, I just wanted to say congratulations to Tatum Carr, second year in a row. She's named All-State Volleyball. She's able to do that. Then, on the same day, her and Kelly Banks will sign letters of intent to play college sports. Tatum volleyball at North Dakota State College of Science, and Kelly Banks at August Stan at Triple Jump at August Stan. That's all I have.
Okay. Tech, Amy isn't here. Operations, Dave isn't here. Beth, what do you have for us?
Well, I thought I would just review my educational update that was in the Beacon this week. Did anyone was able to see that or not? I thought it was important to acknowledge the fact that our egg, you know, egg to school credit is taking effect soon. When schools go out for referendums, levies, it doesn't impact anything more than an acre that the house sits on. Sadly, when we go out for bond referendums, which is a big thing, and we certainly have that in effect in Cannon Falls, our farmers have always paid an unfair share on that. And so, this egg to school credit was a phenomenal thing to happen for our farmers. They will see a 40% drop in their taxes, and that is exactly the way it should be. I've had several call me, you know, they thought it was a rumor, they didn't think it would be this high, actually quite surprised by their new tax amount. So, I'm just really happy. You can certainly read the article. It'll tell you a little bit more about it. If you have any questions, you can let me know, too. But I just thought it was really important for you to know, since you do have a levy and a bond in effect, that you understand the difference and understand the credit that went through, so.
Jerry brought forth the auditorium conversation. We spoke a little bit about that. I know that's not in, it's already passed, but we have used the Shepherd Center to assist us in manning that. How is that marriage going?
The auditorium?
Yeah. I'm sorry, the fieldhouse.
Fieldhouse, yep. Rod just wants dates from me, so I'm actually, I got my schedule pulled up right now. I'm going to get him dates to have those volunteers in the fieldhouse. And also, there is some interest in taking tickets, too, because we've done so much for them in recent years. We approached them about maybe taking tickets, volunteering to take tickets, and they seemed open to us, so.
Thank you.
Also, Beth, wasn't there, there's a gentleman, I'm sorry, I can't remember his name, that donated all these tools to the-
Yes, there's a beautiful article in there. And I did sign that thank you card that went around. He closed up his shop and just really wanted to have an opportunity to give back, and he went out, Mark Walter went out and picked up a bunch of stuff.
So, what's his name, dude? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm going to, I'm going to draw a blank right now.
It's just an unbelievable amount of donation. These tool chests are-
Oh, my gosh, why am I drawing a blank on his name?
Yeah. Sorry, I didn't-
Thank you. Yeah, thanks for that, Kurt. Oh, my gosh. The nicest man in the entire world. He lives just down in Skunkala. It'll come to me. It'll come to me.
I'm being quiet, because I've known him for 15 years.
Oh, whoops.
But it just says the amount of money in these, these, the gamblers, 15,000 to 20,000, it is.
It's remarkable. It's probably one of the largest, and you saw it on your last agenda, you approved that and everything, but it was neat for them to come out and do an article on it as well, I thought.
Have professional mechanic, it must have been huge. Public input, anyone having, wishing to speak to the school board about anything pertaining to school-related items can have their opportunity at this point in time? Okay, we'll move along. Action items? What?
It's Bennett, something Bennett.
Larry Bennett?
Larry Bennett. It came to me. The mind is what works.
That would have haunted me all night. We have no old business. Under new business, we are, we are up for consideration to approve the 18 to 20 Teachers on Call agreement.
Right. There is one thing, if you want to look at it. In the second paragraph down on the second page, a big thing with Teachers on Call, they are trying to protect their own subs, and I can't blame them at all. They are trying to write into contracts that they can charge you $5,000 for you taking one of their subs. So, I want you to see how I changed the contract. They agree. In the middle, it says, "There will be no placement fee if the district decides to hire a TOC substitute to work for Cannon Falls Area Schools who was referred to TOC by the district." And they agreed to that language. So, if we knew the sub prior to joining TOC, or if they have always been a sub for us, those types of things, they cannot charge us that $5,000. I understand why they're doing it. They were really reluctant to do this, but I basically said we would not be moving forward if they didn't put that in there. There are times where a favorite sub, you know, is someone that we want to be in our long term. They understand the building, they understand the safety precautions. We talk about keys and fobs, those types of things. So, that is the only alteration you'll see in this contract. I added it. I think it's in your best interest to have that in there. But with that, I would recommend approving this. This has been a savior when it comes to subs and finding subs. So, I would strongly recommend agreeing to the contract in front of you.
Okay. A motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Jerry.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Rob. Other discussion?
Question, the dollar bond. I mean, it's an agreement, but there's no dollar bond listed out here.
Well, what there is, is every district has their own rates that they set. Our rates are up to day one through 15 are $125 for the day. If you're day 16 or above, it's $130 a day. If you're retired from Cannon Falls, or say you're on leave from the district, we pay you $140. That is very much in line with anyone around us, and so those are set by the district.
So, the Teachers on Call contract doesn't list the pay rates?
It doesn't, because it's up to the district what they want to do. They pay it what we tell them to pay. Yep. That's a great question, though. And we, you know, if mid-year, you ever wanted to change that, say, we have a huge shortage. It's purposely not on there, because what if you needed to increase that again? Or maybe next year, you want to save some money and said, we're going to go down $5 a day with our subs, something like that. It gives you the flexibility at the local level. They just provide the subs and charge what we want to pay.
Any other questions? All in favor of the approval of the Teachers on Call agreement for the next two years, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, review of the 2017 strategic plan.
You know, every year, we try to review this. If we were in the other building, I'd maybe be a little easier to do a presentation on this. I know that you have a copy of it. The strategic plan is where, how we kind of guide what we're doing. There's no major changes in here, but if you want something broke out, we could certainly turn this into one of our work sessions or something like that. The reason why you're approving it tonight is it needs to be downloaded into, and it's a working document, so it can change any time, but it needs to be downloaded into our World's Best Workforce. So, with that, at this point, this is a document that the administrators and I feel comfortable moving forward with. The technology committee and those things are moving forward with it as well. So, it would be my recommendation to approve it as is, and again, a working document that can be changed at any time.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Brenda.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion?
Beth, we met a week or so ago, and she gave me a capoeira. One of the things that we talked about was trying to make these more into SMART goals, making them more, I guess, defined or more, when you, when, I don't disagree, and I like that it's a working document, so it could be, but I guess I would like to see if the board could look at this, maybe a work session, to try and make it more so we've got something, I guess, more concrete at the end, as the goal's been achieved.
Well, the idea behind a strategic plan is to have it be the overview, and then have the technology committee make those very specific goals, which we agree on very much. The curriculum committee, again, having those very concrete goals. The idea of a strategic plan is to not be where is the exact end. It's kind of an umbrella and how everything falls in. But I do think it would be a great work session kind of thing to go through, definitely.
Yep, I agree with that. Since it's a working document, we come up with something at our work session. We can always amend it.
And that's what I like about the strategic plan always being, it's not like you're approving it tonight. I think I was even very careful how I put it on the agenda. It doesn't say "approve of," it's "review of." And I think anytime any of us have something we want to talk about, it's the whole idea, the strategic plan, you're telling the administrators how you want us to move forward. It is probably one of the most powerful documents you have as far as guidance goes, because we really do use that. You even got a goal in there, what you want our fund balance to be. You know, maybe at some point, you want that to change. You know, we could even take a category each time and work through that. So, I do think it's a great document for you to give us guidance where you want us to be.
Any other questions? All in favor of the review of the 2017 strategic plan, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, consideration to approve the 18, 19 school calendar.
Many districts are going to two-year calendars. Our teachers actually did vote on a two-year calendar as well. They wanted kind of some time to kind of sit on the second year, but after working through with our teacher negotiators, they believe that this calendar will be a good one to go through last, or this year, I'm already a year ahead of it. This year, we will have a spring break. In this calendar, you'll see there won't be one. The following year, there'll be a spring break, the next one, not. That's kind of the idea. The other goal here, the reason why you're seeing this sooner, is GCED and WTEC, it is vital that we get these calendars matched up. And so, I'm really excited that we're finally kind of in line. You know, every, all of us, except maybe Red Wing, are just a little bit off. There are some special education days built in before the school year starts that are just a little bit different, those type of things. But overall, we're happy with that, too. So, it would be my recommendation to approve this calendar as our second year of our two-year calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Kurt.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion on the 18, 19 school calendar?
Special thanks to Lori Hansen. My calendar does not look this pretty when I give it to her. I don't know how she makes it look this nice, but thank you, Lori.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, consideration to approve the 17, 18 winter assistance, were to be determined from the 11/23 meeting. If you look in the back page, you'll see the appointments or the hires, potential hires.
Remind me, volunteer, they can get paid from the program, but they have to decide to do that, or volunteers mean no money, or-
Volunteer means no money. We have a few, like Josh Raymond paid through Bad Rats, sometimes paid through Booze Bears.
I see. That's where I'm remembering that. Okay.
So, the only two that were left to be determined and weren't approved are Amanda Carlson there on the girls' basketball. She, Coach McCamey's really excited about her. She's a good new graduate, works in town here. McCamey thinks she'll be great. And then, Rollin Sessions will do JV boys' basketball. Last couple of years, he has been C squad, eighth grade girls' basketball. And he's also CFHS graduate, too. The rest of them were approved at the last meeting.
How do your speech numbers look? I see you're still looking for an extra speech person.
You know, I'm not sure if we'll need that extra speech.
Is that why it's still to be determined?
Yeah.
Okay. Look for consideration to approve the winter assistance.
I'll make one.
Motion by Jerry. Second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Brenda. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, announcement of the Monsanto Grant Center.
Yeah, I just, I always like to publicly thank these local organizations that do so much for us. I mean, I, I sometimes am in awe. We ask, and they, they do these things for us. This grant is not a difficult one to write, but they commit to us. I just publicly wanted to say thank you so much to Monsanto for the $5,000 towards our bomb bots for this year. It's just, they've been so supportive, as well as Gemini and a few other organizations. But I go to so many meetings, and no one has a community that supports their, their school like this. It's just really remarkable. So, I know I've got Grant down there, part of that program, too, so it's-
The $5,000 is a very-
It's a big deal. It's really a great, a great thing, because the robotics program is expensive. We don't pay for much of it at all. It is on these grants. So, I'll just keep writing them, and if we keep getting them, I think that's a great thing. So-
And it's really nice this year, since now as the robotics team expanded to, I think we're at 40 kids, 45, I don't know what numbers we're at last year. But this year, we're doing two regionals. And so, each regional costs $2,000. Now, there's another $2,000 application fee. And so, we're going to two this year instead of one, which is a very nice, you know, boost. We can try our robot out more and have more, you know, access for the kids to try it and determine.
I also won't mention their names, because they get a little embarrassed, but our coaches have donated back their salaries. So, again, another, it's just a really remarkable thing to make this program a go. So, a lot of good things happening.
Wow. Thank you to, thank you to them, for sure. Informational items. The next regular board meeting is November 27th at 6:00. We'll have Abdoue Akhemiya there for that audit presentation, approval of the World's Best Workforce for the area school, staff development plan, and anything else that's brought forward. Ms. Chape, thank you for hosting us this evening.
You're welcome. Anytime.
We'll take you up on that.
Just coming to, the musical, the three nights, and it was really enjoyable, the all the acting, singing, dancing, everything is set.
the acting, singing, dancing, everything set was great. And the orchestra was just really a great production. So, good job, everybody.
Okay. Looks like our agenda is completed. I would look for a motion to adjourn. We're slow tonight.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Katie, thank you.
I'll second.
Motion by Katie, seconded by Jerry. Other discussion? All in favor of adjournments, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.